Always waiting on technology.
Back in the old days. We were waiting on.
Relax, okay. You guys ready? Okay, I'll call to the Order of Commissioners Meeting September fourteenth. I want to welcome everybody this morning. And we've got Rodney Muller here from the Word of Life Church Preparers Morning. Rodney?
Morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Let's pray. Father, we just say we thank you for another beautiful day today. We just say we thank you, Lord, for your constant care, making operations work and do things. Lord, you have set authorities in line. And Lord, today we just lift up Davis County this morning. We just know that we are here to do business for this county. And we just ask, God, you help us to have wisdom to do the right things and to lay the orders out as you would see fit. We just give you praise and honor for your orchestration. Ask for your blessing upon this meeting. We just give you thanks and praise for who's all here. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Rodney. Appreciate it. All right, we got steel benefits this morning. I think we got the Zoom call going. Morning. Paul, you want to come on up?
Okay, today I'm acting as a reference point. So I've been involved in, we talked about this at a meeting a couple of months ago about updating the way that open enrollment and other information is gathered for the employees. And so we looked into this steel program, and Andy knows more about steel than I do, but I can tell you as a platform that this is what a lot of industries are going with. The hospital has it. Our agency has it. Other big firms have this. So what it does, it eliminates the paperwork. Right now, we're under a paper system where we send out paperwork, ask people to fill it out, send it back. This program, and again, I'll let Andy talk more about steel. I'm just saying as a platform, this is something the county needs to eventually go to. It helps in employees being able to find out immediately what they have, what changes they might want to make, because sometimes you forget what benefits are. They can always call our office steel, but it gives them an opportunity. Now, I can tell you, I did talk to Harry Alford at Worthing High School. They did just, because, I mean, everybody can do a nice brochure, and it all looks good when you have a nice brochure on steel. And I'd never really heard of steel, to be honest with you. So I called somebody that's actually using steel, because I figure that's the best way, is talk to somebody that is using them. And she, they, Worthing High School had just moved them three years ago. And I can tell you, it does take, I mean, even if you agree to move with steel, and again, I'm more for the platform. I'm not that big, you know, that much information on steel. And we need to get to a platform where people can go online. And I'm not a tech person. Our agency has it. And it is very nice to be able to go online at any time you want and check your benefits out. But anyway, back to steel, they were paper as well, moved to steel. They said the first year was obviously a challenge when you move from employees, from paper to internet. Second year was better, and then the third year, now it's moving really, really smooth. She sees she's saving time, and she's really glad that they went with the steel program. And so, and I'll tell you, as our office, maybe you have to learn and help the employees. She said that was the biggest thing, is getting people to understand how to use the system, just like it is in anything. Anytime you switch to the system, you need help understanding it. So, not that I could probably help that well, but we have tech people in my office that could help move along. And we'll offer that service if you decide to move forward. FYI, I get no financial incentive by doing this. I'm not getting compensated in any way from steel. It's just a program that I'm, it's good for the county.
Right.
With that, I'll let Andy give his three minutes in.
Morning, Andy.
Hey, good morning, guys. Thanks, Paul. I already did the intro there. I'm gonna share my screen. I don't know if you guys can see this or not. I know Paul brought some print copies of this presentation. I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Kind of call out where I am. As Paul kind of alluded to, we actually touched on this in the Commissioners Meeting. I thought this was something we're gonna explore. Since that time, both Patty and Jennifer went to Steel's User Conference in Indianapolis just to learn more about the system and talk to some of the other people that are using it, that felt like it was something to come in to the county, which is what we're doing here today. Making the recommendation. To pay my compensation, Patty, Jennifer, Paul, myself, and the people that are using it. Just a quick intro on what steel is. It is a benefit engagement enrollment platform. And it's a national platform. They're a licenser of this platform. There are over seven million people on this platform nationally. Steel is really focused in the, so you can see in this, five, thirty percent of people who are low on public security at the platform, by the county government, real focus is around. Just touch real, really on high level. Really rewarding on it.
Go ahead.
Better for the technology itself, actual benefits. There's several leading engagement platform, which is ability to text message people with specific, in specific audiences and get what we do on that. There's the ability for online enrollment. For online enrollment, we also recognize there's a level of people that the online enrollment may not be the right benefit for them. But steel also provides call center support for all of these. They have benefit council where they help educate people back to their benefit. And we'll have, we'll have, we'll have, we'll have a dedicated line. And the last part, I don't want to, I don't underestimate this aspect, that is clients continue to get more and more different calls with the Affordable Care Act. There are new transparency rules that are coming into place this year as well. I just think there's gonna be more burdens on players affected around healthcare. And so, this can help alleviate a lot of that burden. We'll touch on.
Go ahead.
In our team, I would say it's fifty, fifty's administration day, where we make that. All right, so, touch real quickly, where your current situation is really what it looks like with steel. I know there's more on the penny equation. So today, you're being enrolled on paper. This would be getting people out or now getting enrolled online. If they can do that, you know, self-service environment, they can do that with funding within HR, that handling them, or they can be directed to go via the call center. You'll get involved in, I mean, so, I'll talk to you about the line. All the online enrollment changes are uploaded in payroll. So the connection point with Lao is assumed. Not only did he bring this solution to people, but one of the, or, Andy, excuse me, but I've been up to us. Lao was also, had mentioned us to be able to, Patty, Jennifer, so they do play well on payroll. There are gonna be one centralized database to all here. So the importance of that, what that really means, is when someone goes in and rolls, all that data then goes to all the various carriers. Kind of that. So you, on the medical side, you have to go through HRI. Dental side, all these different carriers are gonna get that data automatically. They work a day, somebody's going, and they take that, they pipe it into our system, as in a prior system, doing all these, you got Anthem system, all these different places. They now want to. Oh, frankly, your, your, what is the name? Why are you going to enroll online? Their systems are automatically updated upon life events. So if somebody has a baby, they're automatically updating the system with those, with the life event change. Can update based on termination. So if payroll comes over to this termination, payroll doesn't automatically get cleared over to the creation system, which will automatically trigger a cover notification, which today are all things that happen at twice. That's also a major factor. We've seen situations like a terminated payroll, they'll be terminated from benefits, they don't get offered cover. Those people will hang on the benefit program for a period of time. That is a compliance risk and a handle risk. Player of, of all getting dropped. A HDA recording, because it becomes very simple, because payroll manages that by, it's going to be reported to government and to, to, to how they, how their taxes are. And then there's the opportunity, but this is an optional benefit, is automated and directed, mailed in text messages to specific employee audience. I know we've gone to Patty about this, just also value, certainly in the COVID world, create a separate, distinct volume. Maybe if you wanted to create something to, to, a specific road or you can push out a death message that morning, and about whatever that is. And that has nothing to do, unclear. It doesn't have to do, have anything to do with, it could be, we're adding a company picnic, we're adding a picnic next month. Like, it could be something as simple as that. It doesn't matter. Or an emergency message. Hey, a message right here, and we want to, we're gonna push out some content to a specific group of, of, that's a separate optional component to this, but I think one that have to say. And I will also say, like, for this, if you guys have any questions, I know I can't see everybody right now, but please, please stop me. For Jennifer, Patty, Paul, if you guys can. All right, so let's talk about the cost, right? What does this thing cost? So, the annual cost for the benefits administration of it, which is the online enrollment and the call center support, all those things are included. And they're at ten thousand nine hundred dollars. However, Aflac would subsidize three thousand dollars of that cost. Kim Lethell, who manages the Aflac relationship for county, Aflac is gonna continue to remain in, involved here. Here, research people, but people will also be available, technically in Aflac, he gets the deal. And as a result, Aflac is a subsidized program at three thousand dollars. That cost, anyway, for benefits administration platform, three hundred dollars. Additional components, you can purchase the Affordable Care Act reporting IRS filings with, like a minute, thousand dollars. And last part is the optional part of the unlimited on-demand text messages, ways like that, we already talked about there. That's an additional. That's like. The, the, the person, the last part, the call center are included, and that seven nine hundred dollars cost, the Affordable Care Act is three thousand, thousand dollars.
Hey, Andy.
Yeah.
FYI, the dental program is going to kick in a thousand dollars. I've reached out to all the other vendors. Most of them are saying no, they don't offer a tech contribution, but just FYI, I found out that the dental are gonna offer a thousand. FYI.
Right, so let's talk about some. Pretty specific. Okay, time. How do you think? The Affordable Care Act reporting in two ninety-four and two ninety-five that we talked about, talked about that Jennifer sent, and two of them, because these are all that, right? That takes me at least two to three days to get, full day, if you go and run all that process by now. Every time that somebody has, if you put a new hire that you bring on, or a life event change, I need to add a child, to marry, have a divorce, definitely. They like, those are the life events, times there's a change of thing. That's taking two to three hours, every one of them. Process that in every one of these. Open enrollment, the annual it takes two to three weeks. And that's not just on one individual. That's, that's multiple people. They are dedicated solely to focusing on gathering all the paperwork, putting all those changes out. We would have to make for all those recall points, that the system would eliminate eighty to ninety percent of the time associated at this time. Start thinking about. How efficient you perspective. And then it also is gonna provide, if you totally manage benefits in place and connect any of that, I think it's totally important. They are gonna talk. Can we talk about this, what you experienced out of this? So, employees, I think, will, will enjoy the experience while they get to the age in their own deserved life, and they're allowed to make, like, you know. That's the kind of thing about it. And all they just follow up, so if they're not doing it, they will be, you know, mailed or whatever, that will come back to them to have an A reminder, the E. Reminder. There's the, the HR, the, the. They're gonna have access to all their support, going in, not really online staff, they're gonna have access to, to help them process and help, can help educate them on active what they're looking at. Been attracted beneficiary, that's a really important. Well, that, can't tell you how many times I've seen, there are four of them. They're passed away. And then the ability to send direct communication, which we need for, I've already touched on that. And the last, I think, major advantage would be, I'm sure, so it's the government regulations that provide a lot of burdens to, to plan sponsors, and whether that's the Affordable Care Act, whether that's HIPAA, whether that's COBRA, whether that be transparency rule out there. I don't think we're gonna see that slow down. That's probably going. So, I disagree. And then it's also gonna provide electronic documentation, document, any preferences that arise. Hey, I, I actually wanted to enroll in this, but if you would enroll me in this, then we're gonna have, we're gonna have an electronic. But actually. All right, last thing, and I want to touch on it, first of all, I mean, comment. All right. Over to you, any questions that you have. And I guess I would also have open the floor, if, if Jennifer, Patty, Paul, again, if any of you have any additional comments on this, like, I know that Patty and Jennifer, you guys would have to use your there's anything else that I didn't touch on that you guys want to.
I appreciate Andy's presentation, and Paul, you too, they've been working with us on this. As the auditor of the county, I presented a letter to the Commissioners this morning stating some of the reasons of our recommendation to move forward with this service. I, I use the word that it's a tool that will aid us. So for clarification, in the Auditor's Office, Jennifer is the HR Payroll Deputy, and she handles that. Payroll is under the Constitution. Statutorily, we are responsible for that in the Auditor's Office. HR is, is the component that we need to conduct payroll, but HR is really under the Commissioners' responsibilities. So as with many, many things, as you're well aware, in the Auditor's Office, we partner with the Commissioners on multiple day-to-day activities and tasks. This is one of those. And so, in trying to keep the cost down to the county, and, you know, I mentioned that, you know, if you were to go out and seek an HR person, the cost would be pretty high. So we are trying to keep the cost down to the county, but, but we do need in our office the capability to use some tools that will make the job easier and to allow us to keep that cost down. While this looks like it's adding costs to us, it really is, in my opinion, a step in the right direction for the county. And we're still keeping very conservative goals in as far as the budget process, so. But Jennifer and I are here today to answer some of your specific questions regarding why we are recommending this. We did attend the user group meeting, and we were impressed with the company. We did get to talk with people that boots on the ground, that are using it. And so, we've talked with Lao, our software, and then I'll follow that up with a secondary paper that you have in front of you. But right now, we're here to answer any questions that you might have.
No, everything looks good.
I think, I know we've, we've done everything we can to streamline. This is just one more step in the process to streamline. I know just, just by going to Office three sixty-five, it's streamlined. For me, unbelievable. I mean, it saves hours of my time going through paperwork and everything else. And I've got it all right here in front of me, and hyperlinks and everything I can bring right up. So I'm in favor of something like this. On, do you have anything?
The subsidies, is that this year only, or is that gonna be every year?
Every year for five years.
Subsidies every year. All, all the. They did put a cap of five years on. A year for the next five years.
Yeah. And then the cost, and we haven't decided if you're gonna do the tax or not, but you feel there's that much in benefit coming back to the county over and above the cost? Because what it looks to me, if he's been serving as the HR person, he's been grossly underpaid.
That's true. I would agree with that statement wholeheartedly. And another thing, Jennifer is very technology advanced. That's where, you know, my goal in the Auditor's Office was to move our office in conjunction with you guys into, you know, the digital world. And, and we've been striving to do those goals, and we are accomplishing some of them. This is another step that will aid in achieving those goals, not only for us, but for the employees and for you as a board. The text messaging, when we first talked about it, Andy and Paul can tell you, I was like, ah. But I do see merit. Jennifer, you might speak to that, too. There's multiple advantages just from our efficiency, but we're not only looking out for our efficiency. We're not just trying to make it easy on us, make our jobs easier. We're really trying to make it better representation of you. So, the component of the texting capability, that would be a tool that could be, as Andy said, not that we're, not that we get to have those picnics, but, you know, there's, there's emergency notifications, there's avenues. We talked about several of the things during COVID, that that could have been very beneficial in pushing out information in a timely manner, in ways that we don't capable, or not capable of doing presently. So, do, do I see merit in it? I do. I think, again, it's gonna be up to the users and how we utilize it and maximize it. So, that's, that's my recommendation. And again, now, I told Andy and Paul that, you know, you, you ask for all of that, and it seems, it seems large. But if you don't implement it to full capacity at the beginning, you're likely to not utilize it to the best efficiency. That's in general. I think that's just general human nature, how we do things.
Yeah, if we move forward with this, I mean, would we, could we perhaps kind of do it in phases, meaning, you know, the leave off the texting aspect, go ahead and do the other modules, get folks converted over to the twenty-first century, so to speak, and using that, the actual program? And then, once we see that we have the user engagement, and that this, because at some point, they're gonna have to get online to make the, you know, because that's what we, that's what I would act, that's what I would ask, is over time, we mandate people to go over and actually get online. And once they see how easy it is, then they're gonna want to do that more often. Then, once we see we have the user engagement there, and then perhaps maybe add the text feature down the road.
One important piece of that, I would add, was the fact that not all county employees have email. Right now, most of our pushing of information for the health fair, anything like that, I'm sending out in mass emails. For example, our highway department, we have guys on the street, they don't have that, an email, nor do they have access to anything to, they're reliable on their department head to get some of that information. Our police out on the road, they're not always in the office to get and receive and look at their emails. So, they're relying on someone else to, you know, after I push that out for them to receive some of that information.
Paul and Andy, you might help me on this, but to make sure that I'm not misstating this, but to maximize, yes, we can do as you asked, Nathan, to separate those two, but the, the texting one is not just a frivolous supplement. It will actually aid in the initial base part of it, that we'll be utilizing some of that to have complacency. And, like he said, the reminders of you need to get this turned in, or you need to update that. So it's just a tool that will make things communications much easier.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not, I'm certainly not, I mean, when I first got elected, I wanted to get the counties, county up to the nineties as far as technology. This allows us to get to the twenty-first century, so I'm all about it. I'm just looking at six thousand dollars for that on text. And there's just different pieces of software out there that seem to be a lot less expensive for member engagement that you can use on top of this. And while we're getting that baseline participation as far as just enrolling and adding dependents and so forth, which is really the main reason we're doing this, and had to have a six thousand dollar expense, which is about what we're spending for the, the main reason, I just don't know if we'd get the full impact of that, like, right out of the gate. But I'm not against it, if you guys are passionate about it. I just think that the six thousand's a little heavy on the text part, but you guys use it more than I do, obviously.
Obviously, this request comes in your budget line items.
Paul, just one quick piece of commentary on that. I do think that it maximizes the values. They talk about the need audiences. If you would allow us, if the, while they're out or outside, kind of staying alone. Last one to the air. This is gonna be empowered by the data that we could take, and here are all of our people on our HSA. If you told that in an area that we want to buy some more, they should. Because I directly think it does, it owes the county. Put more money into, into your HSA, have to be better to prepare. There's a lot of different somewhere that we can date within the data that I think to be used in ways that have not, it's worth looking past, but it has to be, I think, if you come back, because again, it's, have this database behind it all. But Nathan, to your point, it certainly can be done in both, in both settings. The thing is, it's so powerful to draw on.
Is, is this a one-year commitment?
I haven't seen the actual contract.
So it comes up annually? Okay, if we opt in, again, I want to follow the direction of the experts, but if we go with the text side of it, can that be dropped at any time?
I'll have to ask a question about, certainly, certainly it's a one-year anniversary, it could be, I'll have to ask a question about.
I mean, I would have no problem starting with it, as long as it could be dropped, if that wasn't beneficial.
Yeah. Except, I mean, it's six thousand dollars, that's off the steep, I think, for texting emails and stuff like that. But, you know, I think this is for a larger, larger setting, even with Davis County, as for our employees, I mean, probably.
Speaking for Jennifer and my office, we'll be happy to be able to track of some records of how often that's you and how it's utilized to give you a little bit of a, yes, to let you know, you know, is it worth that investment? But until we get involved with it, and we can see the.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that. Perhaps we do this, I'd be comfortable moving forward with all components, and then give us an update date next October, and just going to calendar that out. Next October, let's look at the, the utilization on the on-demand text, and maybe we drop it on year two if we see.
They want to do that earlier, just for the Commissioners' budget timeline.
Other budget, yeah, so maybe in June. Six months, yeah, six months. Let's do a six-month review.
That'd be fair.
Yeah. Sounds good.
That'd be great. Now, I can do that with the.
So we're hopeful that if, with your approval, we're on a very tight timeline to get this implemented. But we're hopeful that we can, we'll start on it this afternoon.
All right, I'll make a motion then.
I got a motion by Nathan Gavart. Is that to approve?
To approve. All of the components listed.
Okay, I got a motion by Nathan Gavart to approve all of the steel benefits. Was discussed here. Do I have a second? A second. A second by Ron Ronald. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
And quickly, the secondary component of that that you have before you was the actual software member that we have, which is Lao and Associates. This is, as I was explaining earlier, steel benefits is one hand in this presentation, and then Lao is a smaller part. But Lao has been working with us in a pilot program to complement what steel does in finishing out some of the, some of the digital goals that we have in using technology. As you see on that quote before you, and this is not, there, there will not be a charge on this until it's actually implemented, because this is a pilot program. But we wanted to be upfront with you from the beginning, as far as the cost for that component for the software. because this is a pilot program. But we wanted to be upfront with you from the beginning, as far as the cost for that component for the software. As you see, they're giving us a beta customer discount on both services, but annually, it would add another approximately two to three thousand dollars.
You guys have already used Lao for a while, right?
I've been using Lao for three years.
Yeah.
And that's where some of our efficiencies have come in to the office, again, meeting our goals with technology, but.
And I've been on several conferences with Andy, working, trying to get some of this extra stuff digitized in the, for the platform that goes into our program.
So Andy, as Andy from here today with us, and then Andy with Andy from Lao. It gets confusing when we're talking on conference calls sometimes, but anyway, that is a second component to today's request.
You need an emotion on that then?
I would like that, just for the fact that while we're in, entering into a pilot program with them, once they complete their work, obviously, they're gonna have the expectation that we are going to implement it, and there is a charge for that.
Do you think this is like a year process, or a six-month process, or what?
It will probably, I would think, less than that. They've already been working on it with us.
For a while, okay.
This was the idea, but we haven't actually put anything in paper as an official part of it.
You guys have any more questions for?
Questions for me?
Look for a motion to approve Lao Associates for two thousand dollars.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gaffart.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Andy. Thanks, Paul. All right, moving on. Eighty minutes from eight twenty-four. Gentlemen, have a chance to lift those over?
I did not see any changes.
No, we did, aye.
Look for a motion to approve. Look for a second.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. How about Parma?
Morning, Chris. Good morning. Now, tell me this gets easier, but I don't think it is. You guys see all these papers and think, well, he's really prepared, but I'm not. That's why I've got all these papers. In case anybody asks me too many questions, I can look through them.
Look it up, huh? It'll be easy on you.
So I, I've got a lot of headings under Highway Department, little snippets on each one to keep you guys informed of what we're doing. And the first one is the, I guess, the highway. What we're doing now is we're finishing up our chip seal operations, and then we're gonna do a little catching up on drive culvert replacements, road culvert replacements. We gotta do some catching up on ditching and shoulder work, which anytime we do a chip seal operation or a paving operation, it puts us behind on our general maintenance. We're gonna get that caught up, and we're getting our paving equipment serviced and getting it ready for paving operations to start. Got a couple vouchers here. So this is, I got, should I do them all at once, or?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll do them all at once. And then on the Kenneburg Road project, just an update on that. They have, I think last week, we sent out a mass emails to all the companies about the two hundred north, nine hundred east closing of the road. It was kind of a soft closure. They were still letting traffic through, but today, they plan on closing it permanent. So there won't be any traffic getting through one way or the other. They've been driving piling on the south side of the bridge. They should finish it up today and start driving piling on the north side of the bridge. They still got the, let's see here, they put some pavement down, and it's basically just what the concrete road is gonna set on. So people might drive through there and see the pavement, but it's just what they're getting set to put the concrete road on, south of, south of the bridge. The, the arch is currently scheduled to be placed in early to mid-October, so that would be the bridge. And they're getting ready to start on phase two of the project, which would be north of the bridge to two hundred north. And I've got some vouchers on that, but I'll give them to you here.
What's the projected timeframe that, that's gonna be a hard cutoff for traffic?
On the, which part?
On the, the, the bridge, on mid-October, they're gonna fit the arch?
Yeah, and the, the traffic's cut off to that now.
Right, but when they go, when is that gonna open?
I don't actually have the open date, I don't think.
I didn't know if it was like months, or is that like thirty days, sixty days?
It was like, it was a couple months, I believe.
Couple months, that's fine. That's, that's good enough.
But I do not have that information. I can get it for you.
No, no, a couple months is fine. Okay, thank you.
What else I have on there? The bridge in Montgomery, people have been asking about that. Right now, we're just in the process of preliminary engineering. And the county's gonna have to start having some discussions about right-of-way acquisition, September and October. The final plans for the bridge should be done in December. And then with the letting of spring of twenty twenty-two, we had to have some conversations about that. And then I had an amendment to the initial preliminary engineering contract, that I've got a paper I need to have you guys a service agreement amendment, where we had to get some asbestos testing done on the bridge and some right-of-way staking that wasn't in the original contract that you guys signed. This one is thirty-five hundred dollars more. I'll present that to you guys on the app.
So on the, on the Montgomery Bridge, when we say letting in two thousand twenty-two, what construction season are we? Is it the March through November construction season?
Yeah, they had said as soon as the letting, they would hope to start as soon as possible. I think it was April, April through October.
February, two thousand twenty-two is when we were planning on doing the bridge.
Yeah, so the, so the spring would be when we would award the bid.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm gonna jump around here a little bit, but in the asphalt plant, we got a Delta Services, which they're scheduled to come wire our, our new silo up in our batching system. They're scheduled for the twentieth, so next week, they'll be here to, to run that, and it'd take them a full week. And once we get that done, we'll be able to start producing mix and testing it and proceed with our asphalt operations. We had a guy out, our main guy that was constructing the plant, our main maintenance guy, he was out for two weeks, so that's got us behind. So you've heard me say this before, that we were waiting on wiring and testing, and now I'm saying the same thing. We're waiting on wiring and testing, but, but we had him out for two weeks, and there just wasn't much we could do. We kinda got hit by a little bit of COVID with, with the guys. And then, kind of along with the asphalt plant, we gotta do some environmental, environmental compliance assistance. And I got a contract here with B Y's Consulting, that have, they've done ours for the last couple of years. I've got a contract here to present to you guys. I don't know if I should have maybe had a copy of all this stuff for you guys ahead of time to look through.
They, on that, so they take care of all the I D M, air, air, air quality and everything?
Yeah, and, and the, the water, the storm water and everything. It's, it's the same thing that, that they did last year for Phil. The, the only thing that's different in this contract is kind of the same thing that Patty and them were talking about, is getting it online. Right now, I go in there and I got books and books, and I'm thumbing through paperwork, trying to find our permits and where our recording is and our sampling. We've gotta do water sampling and everything, and this has got a little part in here that, that we can get it online. And the company will actually go in and take all of our old data for the last four or five years, since we've been doing our asphalt, and implement it in this website, and then we'll have it.
更容易 access to it, yeah.
Yeah, and coming up to compliance, I think we store more diesel on our property than, than what our permit now allows us to store. So we're gonna change that. I don't know if I'm supposed to say that in public.
Too late now.
Too late now, but, but it's coming up to compliance on that. So, I'll give that to you guys in the, the.
Man, rookies, I tell you.
Share.
Well, so the, the vouchers here, I got one for preliminary engineering for Kenneburg Road, phase four. Construction inspection on Kenneburg Road, four and five, and preliminary engineering for countywide bridge inspection and reinspection, phase two. So that's the, there's the environmental one. And this is the amendment for the bridge. And then the last thing, which she'll probably be happy to, to follow me, is Laura with Lock Mueller is gonna come up with an introduction. They're helping us with our engineering aspect of basically everything I need. So I'll let her come up and introduce herself, and then we got her contract here, too, that she might wanna explain.
Hey, one second here. I'm gonna get to these L P A vouchers real quick, okay? I've got three L P A vouchers here, one from Lock Mueller Group, ninety-nine thousand seven hundred twenty dollars and eighty percent reimbursable, seventy-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. Got a second L P A voucher here for Lock Mueller Group, five hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-two cents, eighty percent reimbursable, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-six cents. We have a third one here from S J C A. This is all on Kenneburg Road, forty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars and eighty-five cents, eighty percent reimbursable, thirty-five thousand nine oh one forty-eight. That's for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gaffart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead, sorry about that, guys.
Thank, I know that's nerve-wracking. You did just, hi, so I'm Laura Phillipi, good morning. I know I've probably crossed paths with each of you individually, emailed, but I don't think I've had the opportunity to have all three of you together. So I knew he was bringing this contract in front of you all, so I thought I'd come and introduce myself. Again, like I said, I know I've done it by email and things, but, so I'm, I'm presently, previous role, previous life, fifteen years in dot. So live, breathe, local projects. I will offer any assistance you guys need, as far as Chris, coming on new, I know it's overwhelming and everything. So this general services agreement is basically just engineering services that you all might need. I'm still here, you know, he can reach out to you anytime. I don't know if you have any questions about this agreement, got a chance to look at it or anything, but I thought I did. That's it, is there anything else? And I'll leave you some business cards when I leave.
Have anything for Laura? I said, we, we knew when we hired Chris, we had to give him some help, and we said anything we could.
In a good way.
In a good way. I'm saying, saying as far as county engineer and stuff like that.
Phil needed a full-time engineer, so now you just need like a little part-time.
Part-time. So.
Especially after that performance era.
So obviously, just a quick overview, I guess I could say this, this contract does not have any set time terms. I'm sure you, I guess, noticed that. Each task that would ever get assigned to it would have that time limit on there and a cost. There's absolutely no cost associated with this at this time either.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Since Laura just talked about, we'll bring up this Lock Mueller Group contract.
And I don't, I don't know if this was in the packet, and I don't know the timeliness of it, but.
There's an actual amendment, I shouldn't grant like those.
All right.
While he's doing that, I'd just like to say Chris had very big shoes to fill, and he is at the ground running, very pleased with what you've done and the steps you've taken to date, and very fortunate.
I certainly agree. He's doing a great job.
We'll let Grant look at that, and we'll come back to that. Everything, Chris?
That's everything for me.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. All right, we got S I D C, second, public hearing for COVID. So I would like to open a public meeting, right now, a public hearing for S I D C. Morning, Rhonda.
Good morning. First off, I believe in your packet, you have an authorization letter that actually authorizes S I D C to conduct the hearing. So if you could approve that, and I'll get on my way with the hearing.
I got a letter here to, to.
Essentially authorize.
Authorize S I D C to have a public hearing at the, at the commissioner's meeting this morning. Look for a motion to approve. Got a motion by Nathan Gaffart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor? Motion carries.
Perfect.
I'm gonna sign this.
All right, well, with that being said, we'll start the hearing. It is nine forty-eight A M. We are here at the Davis County Annex Building in the Commissioner Room this morning. The date is September the fourteenth. Can everybody hear me? Okay, perfect. There was a sign-in sheet passed around. If you didn't get a chance to sign that, please let me know, and I'll get it to you. It is in my possession right now. The meeting was advertised in compliance with the Indiana Code I C five dash three dash one. The meeting was advertised in the Washington Times Herald on August the thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. The purpose of the meeting is to provide citizens the opportunity to express their views on community development and housing needs, past community development and housing activities, and the proposed project, which consisted of obtaining grant funds for the economic support, job retention, and the response to the COVID-nineteen emergency on businesses throughout Davis County. Public input has been sought in regards to this grant program. Collaboration with non-municipality, non-municipal partners has been a priority for the program and has allowed collaboration among stakeholders within the county and has been essential to the success of the program. The estimated cost of the proposed project was two hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The grant amount awarded was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and a local match of sixty-two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars came from community edit funds. The county with this grant was able to award two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of that to businesses throughout the county with the remaining twenty thousand dollars in funds that will be de-obligated, because we met the maximum amount that the applicants could receive. The estimated cost included assisting businesses that were suffering through the economic impacts of the COVID pandemic, and there was no displacement as a result of the project. With this particular grant, we were able to help twenty-three businesses that affected a hundred and sixty-four employees, and those a hundred and sixty-four employees were sixty, sixty-five point two five percent low to moderate income residents of your county. So with that, I'll open it up for questions, comments, or statements.
I don't have anything, we didn't get it all spent, but we done, we tried our best.
We tried. We did everything we could do. We tried, yeah. And, and that's it, the, the grant end date is actually tomorrow, so that's why we can't seek more applicants or anything like that. I mean, the county has legitimately done everything we can.
Ran out of time.
Good problem to have.
It, it really is.
Audience have anything for Rhonda? I don't have any further questions.
All right, if there's no el, nothing else, then we'll close the hearing at nine fifty.
Thank you, Rhonda. Appreciate it.
No problem. With that being said, we, this is actually the second hearing as required per the grant agreement. We have the close-out documents. Close-out starts tomorrow, so we'll be submitting that on your behalf. And then you should get a letter stating that the close-out is in process and that kind of thing. Last time, we closed it out with the first one, it actually took them almost a year from the time we submitted everything. so, you know, I wouldn't look for it in the mail next week.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good, thank you. Have a good day. Look for a motion to approve the, uh, public hearing. And motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arl, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, we're gonna back up, back here to the highway department real quick, contracts over. You done with, alright, both these contracts for, uh, Lockmueller and, uh, BY's Consulting. Guys around, wish you.
Wish you.
Wish you.
Look for a motion to approve Lockmueller Group for, uh, engineer services.
Same move.
Motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arl, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, I got a contract here from BY's Consulting for the highway department for, uh, help for IDM recording, that's our motion to approve.
Same move.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arl, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Looks like that contract is a single, single signature. Alright, we got the local justice reinvestment advisory council. Morning. Morning Diane, say your name up here when you're up there.
Yeah. Diana Snyder. Um, the powers that be of the state this year decided to create another committee. Um, the state already has a justice reinvestment, um, advisory council already in place, um, I know that the sheriffs, um, the, the sheriffs are do, are on that, along with some court, um, personnel, community corrections direct heads, DOC personnel, so not sure why, but they decided that every county or region needed to have their own local justice reinvestment advisory council. So, um, we kinda knew this was coming, it's been discussed, um, among our community corrections, um, directors over this last year, um, but in the statute, they agreed to allow the community corrections advisory board to serve as this committee if, um, the advisory board decided to do so. So, I presented this at our June meeting that we had, um, the first of June, and the board agreed that they would, um, serve as this advisory committee if, um, you all approved, and then the one thing we do have to have as that is that the president of the com, commissioners and the community corrections director are also a member of this board, which are not members of the community corrections advisory board, so.
That's a great idea.
Add one more, one more task, huh?
One more, one more, one more task, um.
How many meetings you guys using?
It'd have to have one a quarter.
He's got plenty of time to serve.
So, we just held our third one, um, last, uh, on the September eighth, last Wednesday, so, um, I know Patty and I had kinda been talking this back and forth, so, um, we just need to get on your agenda to let you guys know that there's a new, a new board, not for sure, it kind of is repetitive of what community corrections advisory board already does, having all the same players, having all the same people involved, the conversations being held, so not for sure why they're doing this, but now they want to have two more people and create a new board.
Alright.
So.
Sounds like FYI.
So our next meeting isn't till December, but we wanted to go ahead because as a part of this board, they're also gonna be required to present a report to the state J-Rac Committee, not for sure what all that report's gonna entail yet, um, to them by the end of March next year, so we're still, you know, there's these things they give us and they don't tell us how we're supposed to do them, but.
Well, I, I don't know if the commissioners received the letter from Matt Brooks, but who used to be the, um, state director of the community cor, mental health board, he's extremely impressive individual, um, involved in mental health, and obviously, we all know how much mental health affects all of us and in our community, um, so he could be, I know he's doing consulting only, I think that was the letter I received, um, it could be worth an email to him just to see what does he do and what's the cost, maybe there may be something here that could be advantageous.
Yeah, 'cause we're, you know, there's a lot of data that needs to be collected, communications, I, that I don't right now have access to.
I'm thinking he's gonna be that one stop, I know he's signed up some other counties where, I don't know what he costs or what he does, but he could be that one stop that coordinates it for us.
'Cause as we move forward with those other grants that we're working on and gathering more information on substance use and mental health in the community, we'll have some more data, but right now, I just have limited access to the clientele that we currently work with, so, you know, and I know this is a gambit of everything from, everything judicial from pre-trial services to community correction to probation, to even, um, peer recovery and addiction and substance and mental health issues are a part of this board's duties to look and evaluate those within the community, so this board does have a little bit of another step above what community corrections does, looking at that whole gamut of services within the criminal justice system and what's available to those clients, so.
Alright, sounds good.
So we just need those two appointments ma, appointments made, and then, um, we'll be good to go for December and then.
Yes, council make theirs, right?
Yes, yes.
I'm not making the councils.
Do you, do you have time to, do you have time to?
I do, I, I'll have time to do that, but just for, for, uh, meetings a year.
Four meetings a year, so we have, yes.
That'll work out.
Alright.
I guess you'll take it up for next year, right?
Just go one year at a time.
Alright, I'll look for a motion to, uh, appoint the president of the commissioners to the, uh, local justice reinvestment advisory council.
And the community corrections director.
And community cor, and community corrections.
Right, director.
Director. Motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Arl, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Diane, thank you.
Appreciate it. And we got the twenty-twenty-two precinct technical corrections notice, Janice Williams, morning Janice.
Can you name my name, state of, I'm Janice Williams, and this is in regard to the emails I had sent, um, before about these, um, different things going on with redistricting and representing, and these are technical corrections. Um, I sent maps, I tried to enlarge them for all of you, so you could kinda see where those lines were. Um, I don't know if there will be a lot of changes on that part, but there is a lot of things that, um, I don't have any of the numbers yet as far as assistance this information, they said that we normally would've had six months to do all of this, and we have to do it like in six weeks, so, um, I know a big part of it is, um, when I've listened to webinars and different things, a lot of that involves you guys as far as, you know, the presenting and things like that. Um, I did notice there's a deadline coming up, October the fifteenth for, um, please note that to ensure that there is sufficient time to review your proposed precinct boundary changes to make certain that your proposal implies with state law, your proposed precinct establishment order and all accompanying documentation must be received by the election division not later than noon, Indianapolis time, Friday, October fifteenth. There's several things, um, I don't know if some, I don't know if you guys want to have some kind of meeting or other than, you know, in regard to this stuff, just to keep up, I talked with Ron about the stuff that's going on with this, I don't know when that was, it's been a little while, um, he has stopped by and also talked to, he had talked to someone, I think, it's. Um, but the reason for this twenty-twenty-two precinct technical corrections notice was to just reach the deadline, because what they're doing is putting us in like they call it a queue, so that we have someone that will help us if we need assistance at the Indiana Election Division, and our county has been assigned Lori Clark, and she, I've been corresponding back and forth with her, um, I had tried to get the shape file that they call it, um, I tried to get that, you know, right after I sent that email to you guys, but she said that without the thing that we need, without the tools, I wouldn't be able to really do anything with it yet anyway, so, um, Lauren and I have signed up for like a webinar that I'm hoping will help us with some of that, um, because I've never been through this before, so I don't know if any of you have been through this redistricting, representing type stuff, um, anyway, I'm sure that I will need help. And I did send in, this doesn't have anything to do with the technical corrections notice, but I sent in a twenty-twenty-two precinct change survey, and that was basically to keep in the queue, so that we would have someone that would be able to help us and assist us in this, at the state, but both of those things have been sent in, um, I just wanna make sure we reach all the deadlines, make sure we meet all the deadlines, and, um, and I wanted to bring it up to you, and I apologize for not sending that out immediately, I thought the Indiana Election Division has sent it, so I was kind of embarrassed, but I know now to forward everything to all of you, so.
So you guys, you're actually two notices here, is that what the, what that is?
Well, I sent in, um, I don't know if this one was in your stuff, it was a twenty-twenty-two precinct change survey, that one had to be in by August the eleventh at noon, and on both of them, I have just put on here, we will need to review the census information to make a final decision, because I don't know all of those numbers yet.
You, do we wanna get a meeting with Janice, or have one of, sign one of the commissioners to help Janice with that? Ron, would you be interested in something like that?
I could do that, but she's waiting for direction.
I know, it's.
Once she gets that, then I'd be glad to help out.
Okay.
Apparently, uh, Dennis has a program that tracks all the housing and the resident, that would be helpful.
Let's see where everybody's at, what's in each district and.
And we're supposed to be getting something from the state, um, at some point, where, you know, like the congressional districts and stuff, and we just have to make sure we, you know, our stuff is okay as far as our precincts and. Wanna make sure, like I said, that we may, make all these deadlines and everything, and 'cause it'll, you know, affect elections in the future, so.
Right. But the deadline, you said it's fifteenth October?
Yeah, there's a deadline coming up of that, that's the next deadline that I'm aware of.
When, when's your webinar?
I think it's the thirtieth, maybe the twenty-eighth and maybe the thirtieth, we actually signed up for both of them, just, I mean, they're the same thing, but, you know, in case we couldn't miss one for some reason, but.
Why don't we touch base after that?
Twenty-eighth and the thirtieth.
Let's touch base after that and decide which way we need to go.
Same communication with Ron, you need this signed today, or is this?
No, um, I mean, you guys can sign if you need to have it for record, but I have, I sent this in to the state, so, um, it didn't have to have a signature or anything. But like I said, I will continue to forward everything I get from them to you guys, just so you have it and know what's going on, because, as I said, I apologize for that, I, I thought they had sent it, 'cause in the memo, everybody listed and learned from that.
Yep. Alright, sounds good. Do you have anything else for Janice?
No, thank you.
Sounds good, appreciate it, thanks Janice.
Thank you.
Alright, bring this up or not? Central dispatch agreement?
Yes.
You wanna bring it up, or you wanna?
Uh, no, we're ready to roll, it's just, six years flew by.
Six years, huh?
Well, since I've been, are you even wearing that since you've been involved? Notice on the central dispatch, it appears to the city, uh, did, did vote to move forward with that, I just was a couple of minor changes that we had already had sent out prior, just supporting changes, clarification, um, again, just really hats off to the, um, all, all the team on the county side, the sheriff, and Steve, and, um, Scott, and, uh, the council, just everyone just kept moving forward with it, and, and it was a big, big, uh, decision for the city, so we're gonna, uh, move forward with the central dispatch, um, it, depending on, on the, um, pleasure of the commissioners here. Uh, we have already, uh, just to kinda set the table, um, you know, the central dispatch will have two boards, the finance board, which will be the mayor, the president of the commissioners, and president of the council, or their designee, uh, currently, that would be the mayor, and myself, and I think Matt Meredith, him or Tony, I can't remember on the council side, would serve as the introductory finance, then the operations boards, who, who, who we have in there, we do have a, um, a transition team already put together with the, um, with the power users, so to speak, of each side of city and county, um, but we have a lot of stuff to get done in a very, very short amount of time, so I wanna shut up there, and definitely would recommend moving forward with it.
Uh, it's been a long time coming, I'm glad they're finally here, able to move forward, so, Ron, you have anything else on the central dispatch?
No, you know, I've come to the party a little bit late, I know there's been a lot of work, and I take my hats off, uh, the efficiency that should be gained, from a thirty-thousand-foot view, I think it's gonna be up to Gary and the chief of police to make this thing go, there's gonna have to be a lot of give and take and, uh.
It's gonna take a while to get everything.
And it will, it will, it's a process.
It's a huge process.
It'll be well worth it.
Yep, at the end, yeah.
Yeah.
Gary, you have anything to say on it before we get started?
Right. I'm just happy it's.
Yeah. I look for a motion to approve the interlocal agreement, government agreement for the provision of emergency communications through a central dispatch, city and county.
Sorry.
Right ahead.
Same move by Ron Arl?
Uh, second.
Second by Nathan Gabhart, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Relative to that, um, it may make sense, because this is a permanent move for city employees to have an ordinance about who those people are and bringing them into our salary ordinance and, and all that, okay? Um, I'll work with you once, once that's signed and.
Just one second, Sean. I do wanna thank Nathan for this, for central dispatch, 'cause he has worked countless hours on it, and I wanna, wanna recognize that, because it's taking a lot of your time, I know.
Yeah, I appreciate that, but the, the, the guys in the trenches are the ones putting all the time in, it's, um, yeah, really, they made it, they made it as easy as it could be, right? Thank you.
Alright, next item on the agenda, we got our, uh, ambulance advisory board update. Can't remember the changes, but.
Yeah.
Everybody find the changes on that?
So, yeah, we've been working with, uh, the, the county and the city folks who led up the ambulance advisory board, where I need to get that advisory board reset, now that the supervising hospital is the provider of services, we needed to refresh that document, I sent it out to, uh, Chief Devine, Mayor Rhodes, Chief Walden, um, Sheriff Allison, um, Scott Myers, um, as far as who should, should, and the hospital, um, as well, and who should, who shouldn't be on the actual board, and so, then that, basically, this is the genesis of it, um, we'll have an introductory meeting on, um, Thursday, which will be kind of a myriad of the current board members and, and maybe the proposed board members, and then we'll bring those new board members back to the commissioners for approval to reset the next board. Um, there, it is, but thank, um, I can't remember Ron in here, but if we had quarterly updates, um, or, or annual updates, um, we, we will be having more frequent ambulance advisory board meetings than what's in this agreement, we kinda set this agreement up for what will, it, what it will look like once things are, like, normal, so if you wanted, we would need to change the frequency of them in the agreement, I don't have an issue with that.
My concern is that we're so far off the projections, that I don't wanna wait a year.
Well, I, I don't disagree, but we do have the, um, the financial projections really won't be a, a part of this advisory board's, um, jurisdiction, they just have to make sure that the provision of services are meeting code. Um, our hats on the DCH board will probably be a little bit more applicable to the financial provisions, 'cause, 'cause how, how the. Um, our hats on the DCH board will probably be a little bit more applicable to the financial provisions, 'cause, 'cause how, how the ambulance is doing financially really isn't any of the business of the county, so to speak, because we pay a fee, and however that company does the services, we don't care how much they make or how much they lose. On the other hand, we're DCH board members, so we obviously want the departments to be as successful as possible. So, this, this will come into play if we ever reset the number of trucks or the coverage.
Well, that's just, if, if.
Which.
It's gonna have to be some structural changes made.
Yes.
To get to that, that I think the advisory board should be in.
They, they will have certainly a lot of assistance with, um, as far as the actual board members, yeah, so, so I, I don't, I don't disagree.
Sounds good. I do want to read just who the designees for the, uh, advisory board are, that'd be communication direct dispatcher residing in Davis County, EMD, and then a Davis Community Emergency Department Nurse Manager, EMS, EMS Coordinator. Second one, third one would be a Davis Community Hospital ED Medical Director, or other designee of Davis Community Hospital. Fourth one would be the City of Washington Chief of Police. Fifth is City of Washington Fire Chief. Sixth, Davis County Emergency Management Director. Seventh, Davis County Sheriff. Eight, the Chair of the Volunteer Fire Chiefs Association or such groups' designee. Number nine, a member of the Volunteer Fire Department appointed by the Board of Commissioners. That's who's on that, that's who the, uh, board is, that's what the board is made up of.
Now, the three commissioners will be ex officio, so we can still participate in any executive or any such meeting like that, um, as well, so.
I'll look for a motion to approve the ordinance for revising the ambulance advisory board.
It's so moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright. We're not done yet, Paul? Alright, you gentlemen have anything else, we'll get to the order? And do the audience have anything? If not, I look for a motion to pay payroll, pay claims, and term.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thanks everyone, I appreciate it.